We'll begin with a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge. So, um, let me know when we're ready to start on air.
With a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge.
We are ready.
All right. Uh, good morning, everyone. Let's take a brief moment for a moment of silence. And please keep in your thoughts the family of Brian Overcash and the family of Jason Bullison, one of our deputy shares. Brian is one of our employees. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Again, that's a nice touch to have the moment of silence and the flag. Thank you. I'd like to call our meeting to order for today, February 2nd, 2021. First order of business would be the approval of minutes. Commissioners, thoughts, comments, suggestions, motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve the January 26 minutes.
Okay, I have a first. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Terry, is there any discussion? If not, call for a motion to approve by name. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Randy.
All right, Chris, I think we got five on that. Krista, do we have our guest in for the first order of business, economic development, according to our agenda?
We have Mr. Bowen, we have delegate Tom of...
Okay, Senator Quarterman available to start off with for us?
Uh, yes, Commissioner President, I'm here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Senator. Um, uh, well, the floor is all yours. Please begin, and thanks to each and every one of you for being here today.
Thank you as well, and thank you to your staff for helping arrange this, uh, uh, through, uh, through Zoom as well. It's been challenging times. We appreciate everything, uh, that only the commissioners are doing, but all the great people down at the, uh, the county as well. First, we want to thank you for having us here today as we discuss this exciting opportunity of economic development that has the potential to transform the core in the city of Hagerstown and Washington County in a way like none other. Uh, look, you know, UIP1 was a great success. Uh, a lot of that had to do with the support of this body right here. Uh, and it's going to be even more successful once we can get out of COVID. Uh, however, we got to keep moving forward. Uh, we have to build on this. Uh, we can't remain stagnant. Uh, we have to move forward and we need big and bold initiatives to carry us forward. Uh, it's in that spirit, we wanted to speak to you about, uh, potential for the next urban improvement project. Uh, one, much like the first, is multifaceted. Uh, talk about opportunities to transform, uh, multiple housing opportunities in the core to raise the housing stock and increase the tax base, revitalizing neighborhoods, uh, and continue, uh, building of infrastructure within our core, uh, to help, uh, all these things be successful. But what we need to provide this is investor confidence. Uh, we need investor compet- confidence to accomplish the aforementioned, uh, and then that is a catalyst project to carry this forward. Uh, and it's all that in mind that we bring the exciting announcement here today, uh, that the Atlantic League of Professional Baseball, uh, has awarded, uh, conditional approval to award a team here to the city of Hagerstown in Washington County. Now, part of that approval process is being established with a new facility. So not only did we want to discuss, uh, you know, and announce this exciting announcement regarding the Atlantic League, um, but we wanted to, uh, to talk about, uh, how Hagerstown and Washington County, uh, could be a part of that. And the possibilities, the potential for the future, uh, regarding a, uh, multi-use sports entertainment facility, uh, at Baltimore and Summit. Uh, a product that I know historically you guys are all aware of. Uh, you know, just to recap, as you're aware, you know, we, we lost the Suns. Uh, we've known that for some time. Uh, we've been planning for that, and quite frankly, uh, we think the opportunity we have here today is much better than anything we've had before. Uh, this proposed partnership provides an opportunity like never before. You have, uh, you know, true local ownership for a team that has a desire to be a part of this community. Uh, at the same time, it has the ability to serve as the anchor for major economic development and job opportunities in the heart of an area that's so desperately needed. Uh, the goals remain the same. Uh, it's a continued revitalization of downtown, uh, to raise the tax base, to bring more people into downtown with disposable income, to support and grow the restaurant, retail, and housing markets, and to provide employment opportunities in an area that's so desperately needed. Uh, you know, in order to achieve this, though, we need to, uh, provide as a center of that investor confidence. Uh, and this is the true definition of a catalyst project. Um, it's not only about the investor confidence, but it's about the hospitality. It's about our community, and that's all, all of our communities. Uh, you know, we, we're joined one here with Eric Mezner, who's the president of York Revolution. He'll speak more to that. Uh, but, uh, wh- while a project like this needs an anchor tenant, which we're excited with the, uh, selection of the Atlantic League, I wanted to partner with us here in Washington County. Uh, it's also about many other things. Um, you know, it's all kinds of opportunities to be held at a facility like this, uh, concerts, youth leagues, uh, potential partnership with the community college, high school sporting events, um, August, Oktoberfest, maybe the Blues Fest again. I mean, there's, there's many possibilities, uh, to bring people into the core downtown and really help to transform it, uh, for the better. You know, as you guys are all aware, there were multiple studies been completed over the years. Uh, all of them were showed how successful these projects have been in the past. But you really need to look no farther than the communities near us that have had those successes. Uh, you know, very close to us is, is York, Pennsylvania. Again, that's why we invited Eric to speak to some of those things, uh, that they have gone through throughout their process, but really also speak to the tremendous success that their project has been. As we are, uh, hopefully entering what we hope will be the post-COVID world here soon, we need something that's ready to move, uh, something that's ready to move quickly, it's shovel-ready, and it'll really provide that large shot in the arm in the way of economic development, uh, that our community needs. Uh, so I'm going to take a break here and turn it over here to a gentleman that I know you guys are all familiar with. Uh, a man who's involved in our community is truly remarkable, and a man who as a community, we were so much better because of him. I'd like to take a moment to personally thank him on, on behalf of, of not only, uh, our share constituents here, uh, but for his extraordinary involvement, uh, to make this project a potential reality, uh, Mr. Blackie Bellin. Blackie, I think you're on mute, buddy.
How about now?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, good. What I was saying is thank you, Senator, for, for that introduction, and, uh, thank you, commissioners, for having us join you today. Until June of, uh, 2019, I didn't have a lot of interest in minor league baseball. But at that time, uh, I went to visit my college roommate, Frank Bolton, in Long Island, New York. My wife and I visited with he, he and his wife, and they took us to, um, a Long Island Ducks baseball game. Frank owns Long Island Ducks, and, uh, um, I was blown away. I said, this is just incredible. It's a nice facility filled with lots of people who are having nothing but fun. Uh, I thought, what if we could really do something like this in Hagerstown? Wouldn't that be great? Frank and I continued to talk about that over and over, and finally we visited, uh, York. Again, which we'll hear more about momentarily, but, uh, York is probably right-sized for us. Uh, Frank has a much bigger facility than we need because his market's much bigger, but York's probably, uh, very appropriate to the size facility we would need here. Uh, anyway, uh, Frank is my, one of my lifelong friends. Uh, we were college roommates together, as I mentioned. And, uh, uh, some years ago, and I'm going to let him pick up here, he started the Atlantic League. He is the CEO of the Atlantic League and, uh, founder of it. Uh, he was also a very successful, uh, member of Wall Street. Uh, he spent most of his early career, uh, on Wall Street. I'll let him mention that a little bit if he would, and then he can tell you about his, uh, involvement in baseball. Anyway, Frank's league is the league that we want to be doing business with, and we're very excited. Quality of baseball's excellent. So I'll turn it over to Frank Bolton.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, I, I don't know if I, if you can see me. I don't know if I've been entered into the Zoom call, uh, but hopefully you can hear me. Blackie, can you hear me?
We can see and hear you.
Oh, okay. I just can't see myself, uh, which is probably a gift. So thank you for that nice, uh, introduction. Blackie's right, I did have a day job, um, but I've been involved, uh, on Wall Street. I ran Smith Barney's Government Bond Department globally and UBS's Mortgage Back Department, uh, globally for a period of, uh, probably about 30 years. Uh, I've also been involved in professional baseball for 30 years. I own two Yankee affiliates, uh, Kansas City Royals affiliate, the Wilmington Blue Rocks, not too far away. Uh, the Albany Colony Yankees, the Prince William Cannons, uh, a- and then I founded, uh, now 24 years ago, uh, the Atlantic League of Professional Baseball. We are now entering our 24th season, uh, i- of Atlantic League Baseball. Uh, we've, we've entertained over and welcomed over 42 million fans to our ballparks. Uh, we're located, uh, predominantly in the middle Atlantic states. Uh, and with the recent contraction, uh, that you know about because you've, uh, the Hagerstown Suns were a victim of that, uh, Major League Baseball and Minor League Baseball contracted from 160 teams to 120 teams. And at that point, uh, two of our teams were selected and drafted. One in, uh, Texas, uh, the Sugar and Skeeters, which is sort of our, uh, outlier there, where, where, uh, bought by the Houston Astros, and they will become the AAA affiliate of the Houston Astros. Uh, and the club in Somerset, New Jersey was, uh, was, uh, offered an opportunity to become the, the licensee of the New York Yankees at the, excuse me, at the double-A level. So we went from 18 to 6 teams, and in working with Major League Baseball, they suggested that we could possibly, uh, help them in the process with some of the contracted markets and grow our league, which is what we've decided to do, and we're going to grow our league to 12 teams. Uh, we are adding two teams for this coming season, uh, two for '22 and two for 2023, which provides, uh, the Atlantic League and the market of Hagerstown an opportunity to join us. Uh, that's the opportunity. Uh, in 2016, uh, the Atlantic League of, uh, Professional Baseball became the first working partner with Major League Baseball. You might have read about some of the new rules that have been tried out in the minor leagues, that league they're talking about, when they talk about automated balls and strikes, when they talk about, uh, maybe, uh, making the bases a little bigger, uh, you know, there's a series of rules that we've been testing out for Major League Baseball, and we just re-upped that agreement. Also with contraction, uh, there are no more Major League Affiliates. They are now called, uh, PDLs or Professional Development Licensees, and the independent leagues, uh, that joined or were asked to join Major League Baseball are now considered, uh, uh, Major League Partner Leagues. Uh, we were in September of 2020, just recently, were named the first Partner League, uh, to be chosen by Major League Baseball. We're excited about that opportunity. We're excited about today's announcement of conditional approval for Hagerstown. We look forward to working with everyone in, in Washington County and, uh, and, and the Western Maryland, bringing our brand of professional baseball, family entertainment to Washington County. Be happy at the end of this to answer any other questions you have about the league. We're very proud of our product. I think you'll really enjoy it. Uh, just, we've, we've, we've moved over a thousand players back to, to double-A, triple-A and Major Leagues. That's, uh, higher than the South Atlantic League, which, what were they considered, Low-A? So our brand of baseball is played at a higher, higher level, if you will. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, we, again, we're very proud of our product and excited to be part of this project. Uh, I'd like to introduce Eric Menzer, uh, who is the president of the York Revolution. And, uh, I know on our visit, uh, the group, uh, Senator Quarterman and, and Mr. Bowen, were very excited that, uh, that York presented some of the same, uh, opportunities and challenges, uh, that they could identify with. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Eric Menzer, president of the York Rev- Revolution.
Good morning, everyone, and, and thank you, Frank. It's, it's a pleasure to be here, not only because, uh, I, I think I can be helpful to you, but also because I am so enthusiastic about the Atlantic League and about Hagerstown and, and the opportunity to have you all join us, and, and I really do. I've been to Hagerstown a number of times, and I think there are a lot of similarities, both in the character of our communities and in the opportunity. Just quickly by way of background, uh, I also, uh, do not come to being the president of, of the York Revolution from a sports background. I come from an economic and real estate development background, and I think that's very relevant to our discussion this morning. Uh, in fact, I was the Economic Development Director for the city of York when we first started working to bring minor league baseball back to York after 30 years. I then moved into the private sector and did real estate development in our downtown, and in fact, I had the opportunity through the company I was working for to be the project executive for the construction management firm that built our ballpark. Two or three years after we opened, uh, in 2010, I was, uh, asked to come on board and join the team as the president, and so I'm now entering my 11th year, which, Frank, it's kind of hard to believe. It's been 11 years. I actually attended my first Atlantic League baseball game, in fact, in, at Frank's ballpark in Long Island. York tried for many years to bring, uh, what was then called affiliated baseball, uh, to our community, and for myriad reasons, we failed before we turned to the Atlantic League. And I will tell you, as we sit here today, it's the best decision we ever made because of the degree of control that we have over our fate, and in fact, that decision and the wisdom of that decision has really been borne out. We also tried for 12 years to find the right combination of site, financing, ownership, and political will to build our ballpark in our downtown. And, uh, commissioners and others, uh, who have not been there, I am very much looking forward to being able to welcome you this summer to, to see all of the positive benefits of that ballpark. I also want to say that the ownership situation we have very much mirrors what has been contemplated, uh, for you, for you all. We have, uh, a single, very financially strong and committed local owner whose family business has been in York for over 100 years, but we also have 13 additional limited community owners. Every single one of them, somebody who lives in York and is committed to the York community. In fact, we're out, about to open a second round of limited investment to 20 additional community owners. And again, the rule will be very simple, which is you have to be committed to and be part of the York community. Since we built our ballpark, we've been able to identify $130 million in private investment that has been generated on the north side of our downtown where the ballpark is located. In our downtown, we had a historic industrial railroad quarter that ran through the north end. And about 15 years ago, it was really just a series of vacant lots and dilapidated buildings, and we identified locating the ballpark there in the center as that, that anchor, that linchpin, that would create the investor confidence that would lead to that redevelopment, and again, $130 million since then. There's another $50 million in the pipeline now that, uh, that will come to fruition within the next three to five years. We are fortunate in York that, uh, Pennsylvania's current governor is from York. In fact, he was an early strong supporter and contributor to the ballpark, so we continue to benefit from that state relationship. In addition to being the stake in the ground that created the investor confidence in our downtown, uh, there are larger benefits from the presence of the ballpark, and they really have to do with not only quality of life in a soft sense in our community, but also the, the role we play in making, uh, businesses in York County more successful. It's striking to me. I, I know most of the VPs of HR and so on from, from all of our major employers because they frequently bring folks for tours of our ballpark or to our games when they are trying to recruit them to come to York and, and to live in our community, and they use our ballpark, uh, as the, uh, as, as a way of selling the York community. But also say that it is way more than, I, I use the phrase ballpark because I like that word, and that's what we call it, People's Bank Park. Um, but last year, without professional baseball, we hosted 160 events in our facility. Uh, turns out that in a COVID environment, having covered outdoor space was perfect for all kinds of functions and business meetings and so on. But it's also not atypical. We will host 200 events in our facility this year between professional baseball games and community events. Uh, last fall, we hosted the National Wiffle Ball Championships on our field. So there is no end to what you can do with these ballparks. Uh, I, again, I just want to say that, uh, we faced the doubters, we faced the skeptics. I can show you the newspaper articles. I still have them. All the doubters and all the skeptics who were around 10 or 15 years ago are gone. Uh, I would be happy to provide any of you with, uh, contacts with our, our current county commissioners, city council, uh, the Industrial Development Authority, uh, who owns our building. Uh, talk to them directly. Don't take my word for it. And, uh, last but not least, again, uh, be very, very happy to invite you all up this summer uh, to come see for yourself and, and see the impact that, uh, that our project has had on our downtown and our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric. Um, and, and Commissioner President, I can just add a few things here real quick. I appreciate it. Um, you, you know, as, as was spoken here earlier, and you should, I should have, I believe, uh, uh, the conditional letter of approval that the Atlantic League, uh, issued, uh, to Mr. Bowen, uh, along with some letters of support, uh, from the Maryland Stadium Authority and, uh, Department of Commerce in regards to Mr. Bowen. So hopefully you have those at your disposal. Uh, and if not, we can make sure you do have them. Uh, I want to make sure those are out there publicly as well. Um, you know, what we, what we would like to do here going forward, um, is to, uh, obviously want to have a conversation with you guys and see, uh, how, what your feelings are on things, but we are, uh, in the process of presenting, um, legislation here, uh, in the General Assembly uh, to identify this project, uh, initiative of the Maryland Stadium Authority. Um, as you know, the Maryland Stadium Authority has been involved, uh, for the last two years ongoing with the city of Hagerstown in regards to, uh, the Baltimore and Summit location. Uh, they conducted a market feasibility study first, and they're, uh, wrapping up their second, uh, uh, study here at the moment, uh, which should be hopefully out here, uh, literally any day. They had some delays, uh, unfortunately due to COVID. Uh, but that should be coming back here soon. Uh, and what we are, what we're looking to pursue is to have, uh, you know, the, the stadium authority to kind of take over that process, to be the manager and to, of the construction potentially of a, of a facility, uh, as well as to issue the bonds and to, uh, hopefully support those bonds. Uh, because obviously I know that the questions are, have always been, and, and understandably so, is, is the financial implications. Uh, but the path we would like to pursue and wanted to get your feedback on is, uh, involving the state in this matter, involving the stadium authority, uh, to the ability, uh, the, uh, the best they can, uh, to actually deliver this project and all this economic prosperity that we could be, uh, uh, awarded, uh, with hopefully, um, you know, potentially minimal impact here locally. And understanding that, uh, you know, that may be a conversation we have to have another day as far as what those implications may or may not look like, uh, but we are hopeful to prove, to, uh, pursue this path, uh, that, uh, much of that could be alleviated. Um, so that's kind of, uh, you know, where we're at. Where there's also in addition to not only, uh, the stadium authority, uh, and, um, using, uh, you know, uh, that agency, uh, to support this, we're also looking to other ways, uh, of revenue, uh, generation that could potentially be used to this project in the form of, of sports betting. Um, you know, sports betting was granted, uh, to the state of Maryland by referendum, uh, this past fall, and the General Assembly will be this session dissecting that and determining, uh, uh, where license, licenses could go. Uh, so we are going to be pursuing that matter as well as another potential, uh, opportunity for potential revenue. So, um, again, just wanted to obviously, uh, bring all this to your guys' attention. Uh, I think we want to make sure that the excitement is not lost on how excited this opportunity is, uh, for Washington County. Um, we're very fortunate and thankful that the Atlantic League has chosen and Mr. Bowen has, uh, chosen to, uh, make this investment, uh, in our community. Uh, because as, as, as Eric had indicated, you're talking 120 to 180 million, I believe his numbers were, of economic investments. Uh, you're talking 200-plus events, hundreds of thousands of people downtown. I mean, this is exactly the things that we talk about as a community, uh, that we need in the core of, of our, of our downtown areas. So I'll kind of turn it back to you, uh, uh, Commissioner President Klein, and we'd be happy to take any questions from, from any of the commissioners and just like to gather some of your feedback.
Okay, Senator Quarterman, a special note of thanks to, to you and your whole entire team, Mr. Bowen and everyone there for your passion and preparation for your presentation today. Uh, commissioners, I'd open the floor to any comments or questions from you.
I, I just... Uh, yeah. Commissioner Klein, this is Commissioner Baker. Uh, Jeff, Commissioner?
Go ahead, Terry. Go ahead, please.
Okay, yeah, uh, just sitting here listening to, uh, the discussion, I, I came up with just maybe two questions. Um, a fellow from York, sorry, I forget your name, I didn't write it down. But, uh, anyhow, he talked about he had been a former Community Economic Development Director, and now he, uh, manages and oversees the stadium there in York. And he had talked about economic development opportunities and what it's done for their, uh, for York. So with that, I had a question of, uh, it'll be two questions. One, who will own the stadium, and the second question, uh, pertains to the economic development. So when they put the stadium out for bids, uh, who follows the procurement process and what, uh, what opportunities and what, what are the chances of our local developers and our local, uh, workforce being able to build that stadium?
Well, look, this is, uh, uh, Blackie Bellin. Let me, let me see if I can answer, um, at least the first question.
And, and I, and if you don't have the answer, I can, you know, I can talk to you later about that. That's, uh, that was just questions that came to my mind this morning, Blackie.
Well, there's, there's, uh, I think two thoughts about ownership. One might be that the county owns it, county government owns it. Uh, or the other option might be to have chief form a, a 501(c)(3) corporation, which would make a tax-free opportunity, so there wouldn't be real estate taxes on this expensive, uh, valuable property. Uh, I talked to Greg Schnook this morning about that, and he said they'd be fully in pursuing that. Uh, so they're a 501(c)(6) at this point, so they are not tax-free, but they could become tax-free with a separate entity. That might be an option. Uh, so e- either one of those ways we would, you know, go.
Uh-huh.
In, in terms of who would manage the project, uh, the, the project we would hope would be managed by the Maryland Stadium Authority, how they go about bidding, you know, the contractors, I mean, they, they're not a construction company, obviously, but they would manage the, the bidding and the, and the subs and all that kind of stuff, have the project built. I think, and I don't know this to be a fact, but I would think that we could encourage them to, uh, favor local, local, uh, contractors as much as possible. Uh, you know, I think that would be a, a logical thing to do.
Okay. Okay, there were more questions. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, this is...
Commissioners?
This is Randy. Uh, I guess a question for Mr. Menzer. Uh, where did, uh, where did you generate the money to pay for the stadium? What were some of your funding sources?
Yeah, happy. Uh, so our project in 2006 cost $31 million land acquisition and construction. Uh, a little over half of that came from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through one of their, uh, traditional, you know, local capital funding grant programs. The team itself made a significant investment that, of about $9 million. That investment was secured by pre-selling the naming rights and the skyboxes for 10 years. So essentially, uh, a group of local companies stepped up and made commitments, and that secured the financing from the team that was able to be put in upfront. And then two local, uh, philanthropists made significant gifts, uh, to, uh, to, uh, fill, to fill that gap. Our building is owned by the York County Industrial Development Authority, so it's, uh, our local economic development group, a public authority. Uh, they own the stadium and we are a tenant. Uh, so they were the, uh, builder and remain the owner of the stadium using those three significant funding sources, the state, uh, commitments secured from the team secured by the local business community, and then local philanthropy. And we, and we, and we pay rent to the Industrial Development Authority that helps subsidize their operating budget.
And I guess another question for you or Mr. Bolton. Uh, we talk about size of stadiums. We, and I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on this, but I, I, I expect your servicing, and you're, you're drawing from, uh, York and Dauphine County, and that, that's, they have a population of like, I don't know, 700, 750,000. How many, uh, what size are, what would it cost? Are we still at the $50 million mark, Paul? 45 million? What size, where, are, would our size get down because we have a, less of a population?
Well, I think, uh, that's part of what will be coming back from this most recent, uh, stadium authority analysis. Uh, you know, when they deliver this to us here, probably hopefully in a couple of days or weeks, uh, will basically give us, uh, you know, an overview of what it would look like potentially, as well as, um, you know, uh, how much, you know, the, the cost assessment would be. Um, so that, that information will be coming, you know, shortly. Um, you know, as far as, you know, the market feasibility, that's already been, was completed by the stadium authority, and they agreed that the market and the feasibility is right for our area to support a project. Um, so they, they did concur on that in their previous analysis. Um, you know, wanted to back up on a few things here, too, also in regards to your question with Eric regards to the, the ownership. The, the industrial foundation in York is, is akin to what, what our chief is. And I think that, uh, you know, I think anyone in this group, uh, to speak for everyone knows, is open to whatever is amenable, uh, for, for this board, uh, as well as what the best path forward would be is, you know, the potential to have an asset. We could deliver this asset, a- as we, you know, I want to reiterate again, what we're asking is the stadium authority to take this on, uh, with, with minimal impact, hopefully to, uh, uh, you know, financial implications to the locals and deliver an asset which could be, whatever that number is, Randy, you know, 45, 50 million, 30 mil, whatever it may be. Um, and if you had that asset on your books as, uh, as a county, that's a tremendous asset. I think your finance director would agree with, uh, of having as well for, for future, uh, uh, you know, endeavors as well. So, you know, I think, you know, we're open, I, I think anyone's open to, uh, to those, uh, those opportunities or decisions. It's just whatever works best for everybody, so.
Senator, if I could just jump in for a second to add one little piece of information there, just so everyone has the context. There's an Atlantic League team in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, 30 miles to our east. The Harrisburg Senators, the double-A affiliate of the Washington Nationals, are 25 miles to our north. Our market is essentially York and Adams County, so we, we draw some fans from Gettysburg. It's about a 450,000 fan, uh, 450,000-person fan base that, uh, that we're operating on in our market.
And one more, and I'll let somebody else speak.
I, I know, Mr. Messenger, you said that there's multiple events there. Is it the, your policy? To allow almost any event or is there a policy only allow certain events on the playing field?
One of the great things about being in the Atlantic League is we control our playing surface one hundred percent. Now, we are smart about it. You have to be, you know, mindful of the fact that you're playing seventy professional baseball games. And as Frank mentioned, we play at a very high level. These are very, very gifted, high-scale athletes and they deserve a very professional playing surface. Having said that. We exist based on our relationship with our community. There is nothing better than watching eight-year-olds play a T-ball game. For an hour at Fan Fest on our field. That, they're, they're not going to do anything playing T-ball for an hour that's going to hurt our ballpark. So. We are aggressively open to our community. We actually have a whole set of rental policies that relate to nonprofit organizations differently than for-profit organizations that. These, these teams, whether it's the ownership or the way you operate them, they will be successful in direct proportion to how engaged they are with their local community. That is the absolute key to long-term success and, and we operate very much that way.
Uh, thank you all.
Gentlemen, I'd like to jump in here for a second. It's Frank Bolton. I want to go back to the funding source question, just so you know that we've got a lot of snow lately and I can tell you that. Just like every snowflake is different, every funding source in every ballpark that I've been involved in, and that's twelve of them. In building them are all different. Suffolk County owns our ballpark. We, we were funded with a fourteen and a half million dollar state grant. A five million dollar contribution from the county and a three million dollar contribution from the team. So everyone's going to be a little bit different. So that's our funding source and the county owns the facility and is proudly happy to have a twenty-two and a half million dollar asset. On their books that they contributed five million dollars towards. That said, the other question I'd like to, to comment on is capacity. And one of the things when I was involved in affiliated baseball, you build the ballpark to the market. I mean, to the, to the, to the classification. We don't do that in the Atlantic League. We look at the market just like you're analyzing it now and say. Okay, Long Island has a million three in population. Our ambition is to become a parking lot. So, so, you know, we could build a little bit of a bigger ballpark. We chose to build a six thousand seat ballpark. We operated for the first decade in a hundred and three percent of capacity. Again, a million three made me very smart. So, so you have to look at your market and build to the market, build to your community involvement. And I think that a ballpark somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five hundred seats, thirty-five hundred and four thousand seats. Is probably the appropriate market, but you have a lot of people doing studies. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Commissioners.
Yes, sir. This is Commissioner Kiefer. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, Wayne, please.
Yeah, thank, thank you everyone for coming out or dialing into our meeting and giving us more information and more information. For the public as well. Mr. Bowen, I don't know you personally, but your business acumen is something to be certainly admired in our community. So. Your involvement in the project, you know, certainly I, I think. Means that this is likely to be a success. No question about it. Just kind of curious, Senator, yeah, Senator Quarterman in the beginning. Mentioned a UIP two. So I'm assuming that a downtown location is, is that. You know, I, I know a spot has been identified, several have been looked at over the years. Is, is it a, a no-go if this location is not available or other locations considered an alternative? Just curious if you could speak to anything about location.
Sure. No, actually, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Kiefer. You know, as I think the, the Stadium Authority has been completing an analysis on the location here for over two years. There's been significant state backing and investment close to a million dollars has been a commitment by the state of Maryland in that location. That location was identified by the Stadium Authority as to have the biggest return on the investment in the community. About, I think it's about seven to nine different locations previously. So that, that's how that location had been determined. They've kind of gone through that, that process already. So. Hopefully that answers some of that. But yeah, the Baltimore Summit location downtown, we talk about a UIP two. Is that Nate into that aspect of having a true anchor tenant for that project? Because I think we can all speak to the successes of the UIP one with multiple projects and public and private coming together. And we see that happening here again, with this being that anchor to that and, and rolling in a couple more big projects to make this a tremendous success as well.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners, Court, anybody else?
No, I'm, I'm good. I just want to thank everybody here for coming on and sharing this exciting news that we have and, you know. Glad to have you in the, in the community and wanting to, to help us grow here. So thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Klein. I just want to, you know.
I still have a couple of questions myself. I was. Oh, no, that's okay. Thank you for minding our schedule of our meeting timetable. I appreciate that. And, um, but some of the things I want to ask is the, the second study analysis won't be back, you said, for another week or two. Is that what you're saying?
Our understanding that the draft analysis has been completed. There's an MOU between the city and the Stadium Authority. They have a confidentiality clause in there. So I know that there have been. City administrator has seen the draft and the Stadium Authority has, but has not been completed and released to the public. So that, that's where that is. It's, I'm saying it's.
Well, well, then the, the outcome of that report, will that determine the drafting of the language of the legislation that you'll be presenting?
We are hopeful it will help with as far as identifying a number per se, ballpark number intended.
Number.
Cost of the project. Everything else in the analysis, my understanding would be, you know, some different schematics of what it may look like. Different things about, you know, some of the, the rock and things that nature underground as far as the layout. You know, more technical aspects of the project itself. But the, the number as far as overall cost is, is, is the key thing that, that we will have. And in my understanding, talking to the Stadium Authority, they will be able to have that number or we can even amend that number. During this legislative process. So we're hopeful we have that in soon and we'll get that to you as well.
That leads, I have like two more questions approximately. Is this, is this going to be a legislation presented by the county delegation? If not, explain what it would be.
Uh, no, this, this is a bill that I put in as a standalone bill. Uh, we, we've requested this from the bill drafting, uh, probably about a month or so ago. And they're still waiting for it to come back. Uh, but no, it's going as, as a standalone bill.
Okay, next, um, one of the things that's always been mentioned about is the county has a building on Baltimore Street. What will be the discussions and if that would happen, how would that be negotiated and the costs associated with a relocation and so forth? Has that been considered yet?
Sure. And, and I think that you bring up a very good point and I would, uh, you know, equate that property much the same as other five properties in that parcel. And I think that without getting too far ahead of ourselves, that would obviously be a conversation you'd have to find a, a mutable, amicable. Solution to all parties. I don't think there's any presumption on anyone's behalf on any property or any parcel in that area, one way or another. So. You know, I think as, as those discussions move forward, uh, and that looks to be, you know, the viable location. That that would be a conversation that I think that we would obviously all need to have with the public's involvement as well. To determine what the best course of action is there, but there's no presumption either way.
All right. Um, one more comic slash statement. Commissioner Baker made some good comments about using local contractors. I also want to refer to one of the comments made that you have approximately thirteen some type owners now and you might open that up to approximately twenty more future. Owners in some percentage apart. Will they also be local people included? That opportunity?
I'll let Mr. Bowen speak to that. I think that was in relation to how the setup is up in York, but I'll let Mr. Bowen speak maybe more towards that as he's in the group effort up here locally. Yes. Frank has taught me an awful lot about baseball in a short period of time and, and I know just a fraction of what he does, believe me. But two things that he's really emphasized throughout this process is right sizing the ballpark. Don't, don't overbuild it because then it'll look like it's empty even when it's got a, you know, a, a pretty legitimate piece of the population. You want the thing to be full. You, you know, you've been to, you've been to watch the Suns play. It's, the place is empty and it's not very exciting. So, you know, building thirty-five hundred seats is better than building sixty-five hundred seats. Uh, so he's emphasized that over and over to me. The other thing that he's emphasized as an absolute key to success, he thinks in the Atlantic League has been local ownership. Outside ownership doesn't work the same way local ownership does. My thought about, um, the other owners, I'll be one of them. But my thought about it is I want people who are committed to this community, who care about this community, who do business in this community. And who will support this project, you know, by buying billboards or skyboxes or, or season tickets. Entertaining their employees and customers at, at, at the ballpark. These are critically important to the success of the team, which the team will be responsible for maintaining the facility. We expect that we would create a capex fund, a sinking fund or whatever you want to call it. Where a portion of the rent that we pay would be, would go into a fund so that if fifteen years out, we need to replace all the seating. We don't have to go back to the state, county or city for anything. We'll have, you know, millions of dollars set aside to do major renovation projects, which will be required. One of the thoughts that I've had about this project is, and, and this is kind of fascinating. On a, on a private business perspective, you could never afford to pay for this thing and get a return. And that's where I think the state comes in. All of us pay taxes to the, to the state of Maryland, whether you live in Hakers Town or Washington County. And I think if we can get the state to make a substantial commitment. What we're buying here is something that will last the next hundred years. This will be an active facility, just like the Maryland Theater has passed its hundredth anniversary. This thing will last, be maintained properly in a private sector. Way and provide opportunities and entertainment for the community forever, if you will. And, and that's the most exciting thing to me. This thing is a major project and it's worthwhile and my excitement couldn't be anymore. I've talked to three potential people that I thought might have an interest in it. All three of them, I said, look, this is going to cost money. I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to get into this thing cheap as a, as a team owner. All three of them said, I'm interested in learning more. So we've obviously got to flesh out details, but. My thought is local ownership, a hundred percent.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments or Senator Quarterman, would you want to do a summary?
Well, the only thing I would just ask and, and again, first, thank you again for, for this opportunity to, to, to have a conversation here today. And I guess, you know, as we leave here and I go back to Annapolis to, to pursue this. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page that there's, as we look to towards the Stadium Authority and ask the Stadium Authority to look into this. To potentially, you know, adopt our, our project here as one of their initiatives. Just want to make sure we're on the same page and there's no opposition as, as we continue to go down this path. To have them, you know, hopefully be able to produce this for us. Obviously, if there's something that changes that would change the aspects or, or the conversation that we had here today. And that's a, that's another conversation we need to have in another day. But it basically is one of, as, as was been presented to you guys here today. Just to confirm that we're kind of all here on the same page. But I think that's important. That's important when we go down and we, we fight for things for our community that, that we have. Everyone is, as my predecessor used to say, is singing from the same sheet of music. So just wanted to kind of leave off with that. And, you know, I will dig into a couple of quotes here real quick that I think some of you heard me say before. Look, we know this project has been talked about many times in the past and it's been talked at, at, at a great depth. I think it's twenty-plus years this, this conversation's been going on and, you know, I think it really, it's, it's Hakers Town's time, it's Warston County's time. And, you know, the fact of having local ownership and, and someone with the pedigree in the, of, of Mr. Bowen being involved with this speaks volumes to a potential success. You know, there, there's been many quotes in the paper in the past about, you know, downtown projects. Couple of my friend in the past, but I'll, I'll read a couple of them here again, just for the general public to hear as well. You know, it's been said in the past, quote, I don't want to come downtown and leave here at night with all the weirdos to leave that thing alone and put it out by Interstate seventy. We heard a county commissioner in the past say, there are issues about parking, transportation, security and so forth that come into play with the selection of this site. We all support efforts to make downtown viable, but we cannot force feed the market. We've also heard, I hope they don't put that downtown. Not once I've ever seen police. I sure do wonder about security in downtown. And I'll leave you with these quotes because most people would indicate or think it's the general public probably listening, these quotes are about this project, but they're not. These quotes are all from the Herald Mail in the year nineteen ninety-nine when we spoke about the university system of Maryland. And I would challenge anybody, you know, on this call or even the general public to indicate that that project has not been a tremendous success. You know, without that project, we won't have a UIP one. We don't have the Maryland Theater being renovated. We don't have, you know, the Barbara Engram School. We don't have all the wonderful amenities that we've had. From the success of the university system of Maryland. So, you know, again, I appreciate the, the time you guys have given us here today, but I just want to make sure as we leave here that we're kind of all on the same page. In, in regards to this discussion, as we pursue this with the Stadium Authority.
Just, Paul, just for clarity, I didn't hear opposition, but I didn't hear full support. What I'm hearing from the commissioners is they want more detail. Things are finalized, you may hear more of opposition by the Board of Commissioners. Okay?
Now, I understand that. I want to make sure that there is no opposition at the time and I appreciate that comment, Mr. Klein.
I, I think we're all going to keep an open mind and I think that's fair at this time. And again, I thank you and your team that are in here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Commissioners, uh, next up we have Commissioners Reports and Comments. Vice President Baker, do you have some comments today?
Uh, yes, uh, just two things. One, obviously our roads department and other, all of our departments have just done an exceptional job during the winter snowstorm here. And I just want to thank them for everything they've done and to keep, you know, to encourage them to keep up the great work. And they have done, in my opinion, an incredible job and I just wanted to personally thank them for that. Also, I, I can't remember if it was last week or the week before, I'd mentioned about the structure on Jonathan Street that was. Discovered through the demolition company of Mur Balls and. I didn't see, I don't know if the newspaper had printed anything or not, but I would encourage the newspaper to do another story on that and to keep the public updated as to the progress. And, you know, and I think there needs to be more, uh, more feedback and more. More press for the individuals that actually discovered it and, and stopped their work. Because they knew that that was a special feature for Washington County. So just wanted to get that comment in there and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Kiefer, do you have some comments today? Reports?
Um, yes, uh, just two quick things. One, um, just like to thank County Administrator John Marderano. For just the, the number of updates that we're getting. We, I've received several. I know it was sent to the email. Or Commissioners Email Group on a variety of issues. Thank you for those. Just now, I don't always respond, doesn't mean I don't read them, just don't want to flood your email box because I know you're busy and, and you've really come on board hitting the ground running. So thank you for those constant updates. That, that helps answer a lot of questions and helps us to be prepared when we respond to our citizens. The other question I have or a comment, don't know if it's a question or a comment, but, um. The, I know there's been some conversation about the business license and zoning certification requirement bill. I've spoken to Delia Wyble, Chairman of our delegation, and he brought up some very valid questions. I'm not sure they've been fully answered. I was told that this Friday is the deadline to submit bills. I know bills can always be submitted later on throughout the session, of course, but. That expeditious process, I, I guess, requires bills to be submitted this Friday is the deadline. I'm not sure if I'm quite ready to fully support that request just based on some of the questions. I believe this was something we presented last year and because of the abbreviated session, um, due to COVID, I, I don't think this bill was taken up, but. Since COVID, it kind of brought to mind in my question, a question in my mind, maybe Kirk can answer a little better for us. We've had a lot of businesses, um, a lot of employees now working from home for whatever their trade may be. And maybe it's merely just running an office. Something pre-COVID is contractors, construction workers. Might use their home as their place of business for maybe tax purposes or just correspondences or where to receive their bills in mail and. And they do no more than park their work trucks in their driveway at the end of the day. Just don't know how they would be encompassed into this bill and just a, a lot of the people that are now working from home in a variety of professions that weren't working from home before. Maybe that's temporary, maybe that's more long-term. I, I would imagine for a lot of those folks, they'll be working from home permanently now. And I just wouldn't want someone to get caught up in, if they have a kind of a home office. For their business, that they get caught up in needing a zoning certification or they might be in violation of a zoning statute. Only because that's where their computer and desk is located in their home, not necessarily where they do their work or meet their clients. So. Just wondering if there might be supports, maybe pause right now on that bill request until we got more information. just wondering if there might be supports, maybe pause right now on that bill request until we got more information. Any thoughts?
Commissioner, this is Kirk. My understanding in speaking with Becky Gander of our Plan Review and Permitting Department is that every, everybody who applies for a trade license who is going to be using their home address as their business address has to apply for a home occupation zoning permits so that they are not in any type of violation or difficulty. So my understanding is that that routinely occurs as part of the application for plumber's license or electrical license and that's not a problem. The real purpose of the bill is to make sure that when somebody is looking to establish a business at a certain location, that the the use is actually allowed at location. So some of the problems we had in the past and what we are hoping to prevent by reinstitution of the requirement for zoning certification is we've had people established a business, entered into a lease, rented property. And then, you know, soon after they've already opened the business, we get a complaint that the use isn't allowed in that zoning district. And obviously that causes a problem for us as well as for the business operator. And we're just trying to to prevent that by saying that when you apply for your business license, you just have to present some type of proof that the proposed use is allowed at the proposed location. I'd be happy to answer anything. I hope that addresses your concerns.
I I appreciate that, Kirk. I wonder if it might be prudent just to hold off a little bit since we're asking Delegate Wyble to advocate for that bill and there's some questions. Maybe language to be clarified a little more, but I I just, I I I'm hoping we can hold off on that for right now. That's all.
Can't that bill be presented, language added later or pulled, Mr. Downey?
Yeah, I mean, this was a pretty simple, straightforward request. It was to basically put back into the law what was removed a couple of years ago. I'm not sure that any clarification is necessary. Obviously, the the bill that we're asking for to require zoning certification does not change any zoning ordinance requirements where the use of, where the use of property is concerned.
This is, Commissioner Klein, this is Commissioner Baker. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you, Terry.
I want to thank Commissioner Kiefer for bringing that information forward because I've been thinking about this about on this bill since we've received an email or two on it. And at this time, I'm withdrawing my support because I don't fully understand the impacts on all the businesses that that this new law would affect. And the other question I have is how many I don't know if Kirk would know, how many, how many times have we had to address this issue in the last couple of years? So I'm going to be withdrawing my support for that bill at this time.
I don't know how, I I don't know what the actual number is that we've run into the scenario I explained to you before. I know that this has occurred at least once or twice, perhaps more. That would be a question for Ashley or Becky.
Yeah, and I need two other commissioners to voice an opinion.
Personally, I'd like less, I'd like less requirements, not more. That's just my opinion.
I I'm in favor of having the bill just holding, holding off right now. But I I would at least temporarily withdraw my support. And I think that would be in deference to our lawmaker who's also, our local lawmaker who's also raised some questions about it. That's all.
But did Delegate Wyble ask it to be pulled or was he just asking for clarification?
We spoke yesterday about this and he thought it may be best to hold off just a little bit.
Is, was that in his, was that in his email?
I would bring that forward to the commissioners.
Okay, I need, I need another commissioner to join in with, to to hold it.
Commissioner Ronald Schmitt, I've got a quick question for this with this bill. So if that situation, and Kirk, this is for you, if that situation happens where a business, you know, they got a, they leased a spot and they opened their business and then there was a complaint and they're not zoned properly, that business is not zoned properly for that that area, what happens to that business?
Well, it's a violation of the zoning ordinance and, you know, that could result in the issuance of a citation or a fine for conducting a use that's not allowed in that area. And obviously, as a practical effect, I mean, to comply, they would have to cease the use, which hurts the business and hurts the whomever they're renting from because obviously he thought he had a viable tenant and now the viable tenant is conducting a use that's not permitted in that property. So that's, that's what the purpose of requiring the zoning certification prior to the issuance of a business license is, is for.
Yeah, I I completely, that that's what I want to make sure is, you know, so if we didn't do this, then that situation could happen. And if it's once, it's, if it only happened once a year, that's one too many times. And I completely understand Terry's argument and I agree with it. Less regulation instead of more should always be the answer. But I I just don't want a business getting to something that they think they could and get in trouble. I, what I would recommend is that we talk to Delegate Wyble or any of the other delegation that has put in this bill in and find a clarification or anything so that we can get this bill put in before Friday. So that it can be seen because if it doesn't happen before Friday, it's not guaranteed to be seen. So I don't want to hold off too long, but I think we do need a if, if there are some problems with clarification, because I read the same emails too, then we we need to get that done and so that everyone's on the same page. But this is, to me, is it's in support of the businesses so we don't hurt them before they ever open up.
This is, this is I appreciate all of those comments. I I think it's interesting that we need an entire bill for a situation that may have happened once. Less regulation, I I think is is good, but I would also caution, as I mentioned during my initial comments a little bit ago about this, a lot's changed since COVID and some people are working from home or or kind of based at home that otherwise wouldn't be. So we're kind of in a unique, albeit maybe temporary situation for now, but a lot has changed and a lot of people's work location has changed because of COVID. I I'm not sure if now's a time to really go out and maybe police that, but just my thoughts.
All right. My suggestion is some clarification before we submit the bill. Is that okay for everyone? If we do or not submit it, get that clarification.
Oh, that's, that's what I think. We need the clarification before it's being submitted.
I just want to clarify that the purpose, I mean, the bill does not affect where any type of business use can occur. So it has, it doesn't have any effect at all on whether people can work from their homes or or otherwise.
All right, I I need a decision so we can get moving on. What are we doing, commissioners?
I I appreciate dialogue with our delegate and I value his input and his comment and I don't think that can be done before Friday. And I think we should err on the side of caution and take our time. Don't rush things because I know when things are rushed, way more issues are created.
Well, I think we'll at least make, I'll try to contact Delegate Wyble first. Today's only Tuesday. They are working from home in Annapolis right now. So I I suggest we contact Delegate Wyble with some clarification before we decide to submit or pull it. That's my offer.
Yeah, that's fine. And Delegate Wyble.
Basically, basically, we're all in agreement. We're just trying to get clarification and we we can communicate with him before Friday. Commissioners, you okay with that outcome?
I I am.
Okay, hearing no objections.
That's fine. I assume we're seeking Delegate Wyble.
Yeah, we're kind of, we're kind of supporting your suggestion, Wayne. We're just going to get clarification and then you made valid points there. Commissioner Kiefer, do you have any more comments?
That's all, sir. Thank you.
I I thank you very much. Commissioner Marmel Schmidt, comments, reports?
I've got two quick ones. First, I don't know if everybody remembers, but with COVID, it's been a long time, but about a year ago, we supported the Leitersburg Youth Indoor Athletic Facility there that they built. And I had the opportunity to stop by and see that over this weekend and it's an amazing facility. It's going to be opened up here shortly, if not already. It's a beautiful facility and it's a great thing for that that community. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. And if you have a chance, take a look. It's absolutely amazing. The second thing is last week, I asked everybody to take a look at the House Bill four ninety-five. And last night, I forwarded everybody an email with the Maryland Chamber of Commerce and our local chamber opposing House Bill four ninety-five as it is a, quote, a retroactive tax increase to the small businesses in Maryland. And I would ask that we support in our businesses and our chambers in opposing House Bill four ninety-five. So I'd like to see if we can get a letter sent opposing that bill.
What does Mako say on that bill?
Mako is taking a no opinion on this bill or because that is, this is a increase in taxes to the state and an increase, or sorry, increase of income to the state and to the counties. But it is on the backs of the businesses that we're trying to support so hard right now.
Well, wasn't, pardon me, Commissioner Rush, wasn't it something that Governor Huguen was doing was putting a moratorium sales tax for some of these businesses as well? Is there, that's separate of that bill?
Yeah, that's separate of this bill. This is a decoupling of the CARES Act money. So basically what it does is it increases the expenses on the, on the businesses so that their, their taxes will end up going up higher. I mean, it's it is a positive, county is a positive to the state because it's increasing taxes, but it is a definitely a negative to the the small businesses.
Commissioners, comments, thoughts on support of a letter?
Commissioner, this is Terry Baker. Thank you for bringing that forward, Court. I support any tax decrease. I'm not for raising taxes. I'd like to decrease taxes. I wholeheartedly support the chamber's recommendation on that bill. Again, government's always in the working man's pocket and that, of course, when they get into our pocket, that affects what we can and can't do to generate revenue for, more revenue for the community actually, actually, because you have less money to spend. So I I wholeheartedly support that bill and I would recommend a letter.
That's two support. Is there any other commissioners in support?
I would support a letter. This is Commissioner Kiefer as well. I think I've always been on the record as opposing tax increases. So absolutely, I oppose.
Randy, do you support? That's three. I support. That's four.
Yeah, I support.
Okay, thank you. Court, any more comments, reports?
Uh, that's it. And as everybody knows, today at one o'clock, I'll be testifying for the, one of our lead agendas or priorities for Annapolis and the Medicaid reimbursement bill for our EMS station. So hopefully that we'll get a favorable reading from the committee today. So thank you.
Court, thank you.
Hey, what was that bill again?
I have a House Bill four ninety-five.
Now that we're presenting the letter for?
Yeah, House Bill four ninety-five.
Thank you.
It's the decoupling, it's income tax, Internal Revenue Code amendments and the Federal CARES Act decoupling.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Was somebody else trying to add a comment? If not, we go to
I had a question for Commissioner Marmel Schmidt. On that, on that EMS bill that you're introducing and or talking on today at one o'clock, I had a question. I was thinking the other day. How, how about your private ambulances? If they go out on a call or anything like that, do they submit a bill and get paid for it?
And so this is only for Medicaid reimbursement. If they did a Medicaid call, then yes, they would get reimbursed the same amount of money, but it's, it's if they do a Medicaid call, most private like ambulance transports, they're not going to do a Medicaid call.
Okay, and then, so they would only get the same amount that our, that we would receive.
Correct, yeah. So a Medicaid call, your reimbursement is currently is a hundred dollars. There's no mileage, nothing. It's a hundred dollars flat rate. Where West Virginia is three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents plus mileage and Pennsylvania is three hundred and fifty dollars plus mileage for the same Medicaid call.
Okay, yep. Good luck with that. I, we need that banned.
All right, Commissioner Wagner?
Oh, good morning. Uh, that first conversation on the zoning, I'm in concurrence with everybody on a business. I just think that it should never got to that point in the first place, but that's my thoughts on, but I'll wait and see what the discussion, I'd like more discussion on it. And on another note, I had, I had a couple of calls from a development in Hager, in Worce County that didn't have their snow removed yet. So I just made a quick call and our roads department at that point was was cleaning off a tree that fell across Route eleven in Williamsport and State Highway, but they were there and they took care of that. And he said, I'll get back to you in five minutes. He got back to me in five minutes and five minutes later, he texted me and said the plow's in the development. So I mean, you know, everybody be patient, but you know, you talk about, we're doing a good job there and I do echo what Terry said. That they're, they're doing a wonderful job, that just people be a little bit patient. That was a good bit of snow stretched over two or three days. And the boys were out working and then the ladies. So anyway, appreciate it. That's all I got.
Still there?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. For my report, I do also want to commend the highway guys, talking to several of them. Many challenges with the storm coming and going, open spots, icing at twelve, sixteen hours at a time doing this under these conditions. So I praise all the work that they've done for that. And again, I want to remind about when it comes to the vaccinations in Washington County, I know the supply is limited, but I think seniors should be the highest priority, sixty-five and older. They're the largest percent that are dying, that are contacting, contracting the virus. They're taking up our hospital bids. So at a time that we're vaccinating other folks in other categories, we should always remember seniors first. But that being said, that concludes my report. I'd like to go to staff comments. Krista, who is up for staff? Okay, there's staff comments next. Is there any staff waiting?
Commissioner Klein, I don't believe there's any staff comments other than I have a few comments. I don't know if Kirk has any comments.
Or Krista, either one.
I don't have any. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Uh, Krista, do you have?
Commissioner Klein?
Yes, sir.
You may want to come back to that here in a little bit because I know I've been kicked off twice and had to get back on. So maybe come back to the staff comments to see if there are any staff comments. I don't know if they were kicked off or not, but I know I've been kicked off twice.
Well, thanks for that chat. Krista, do we have any staff scheduled to speak today that you you're aware of?
President Klein, I do not have anybody scheduled for staff comments, nor do I have any.
Okay, that answers Terry's question and yours. Thank you. So then we'll go to John Mark Farino. Please continue.
Thank you, President Klein, and good morning, commissioners. And I'll just say that I did leave the staff comments on the agenda today, even though we didn't have anyone signed up because I wasn't, wasn't sure. And I just wanted to make sure if anyone had any last minute comments, that there'd be a space for them to do that. So so I appreciate that. Some of these things have been mentioned before, but I I want to go ahead and mention them again. I do want to thank all of our highways employees and all of our other employees and other departments that have worked so hard the past few days during this snow event. It's been a long couple of days for them. They started early Sunday morning and they've been going long days and taking, taking the required break and then coming right back and going at it again. So I just want to echo the comments that were made here today. They've done a great job. And they're still out today. They're out today still clearing the streets and, and as Commissioner Wagner said, please be patient, but they're doing a wonderful job and and we all appreciate their hard work. So I just wanted to pass on my thanks as well. The second thing, and this was also mentioned, but I do want to pass on our thoughts and prayers to the family of Julie Overcash who passed away on Friday. Julie was the wife of county employee Brian Overcash. So our thoughts and prayers are with Brian and his family during this difficult time. The next item is, I'm excited to announce that the state of the county video will be released today at two P M. The county wish you a press release at two o'clock today. o'clock today and that will include a link to the video and a link to our county webpage, uh which will have a special section dedicated to the State of the County. The video will be able to be found on the county YouTube channel and on the county's website. Uh if anyone has any questions about the video or the State of the County, the county has created a dedicated email address that where you can pose your questions and that'll all be in the press release that'll be released to the public this afternoon. Uh and just on a final note about that, the Commissioners hope to be back to an in-person State of the County event next year. Uh hopefully, we'll be back to uh and more normal schedule and we can all meet in person. But this year, uh we're we're releasing the State of the County this afternoon. Uh I want to thank the PR department. They they did a great job with the video uh which was done in-house. So I hope everybody enjoys it and any questions you have, uh please go to that dedicated email address and we will uh we will respond to those questions. And the last thing I have today, I'm not looking for a decision today, but I wanted the Commissioners to start thinking about when they would be comfortable to return in-person meetings. Obviously, it's going to depend on the COVID nineteen numbers in Washington County. As you as you all know, the numbers are continuing to decline, but they're still a little higher than what we'd like them to be. So um I want you to know the staff will continue to monitor those numbers and we'll bring this back uh in in a few weeks to to have a further discussion. But if in the meantime, the Commissioners have any thoughts about that, uh please reach out to me. Um but I think I just wanted you to to start thinking about that and hopefully the numbers will go down and we'll be able to meet in person sooner rather than later. Uh and that's all I have today. President Klein, unless any of the Commissioners have a question.
Yeah, just well, I'd just like to have one more comment. Just thanks for bringing up all our emergency responders, our police CMS, phone to fire EMS. They were all out there on the roads according to the monitor servings to the public. So again, thanks to all. Um with that being said, I'd like to proceed to our first budget adjust uh budget item, uh agenda item, budget adjustment, capital improvement plan. That would be our capital improvement committee members. Um please uh begin, introduce yourself if matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Sarah Grease, Chief Financial Officer. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Sarah. Thank you.
Wonder wonderful. Um good morning. I'm here to present uh on a budget adjustment on behalf of the Capital Improvement Program Program Committee. I do have those members with me today. They are on the line. I have Jill Baker, the Director of Planning and Zoning, Andrew Eschman, Director of Public Works, um Scott Hobbs, Director of Engineering, and John Martorano, County Administrator. Um through our committee discussions this year, it's become quite evident that the reductions in capital funding over the past several years has had quite an impact on some of our infrastructure projects, um projects that are critical in providing services to our citizens. So I have before you today this budget adjustment um for the current fiscal year that we're in, fiscal year twenty twenty one. And this adjustment not only um increases some funding for critical capital projects, it also takes into consideration the income tax that we've received for the year and tax that we expect to receive throughout the end of the year. The fiscal year twenty one budget was very was done in a very unique um time when we were, you know, early on in the pandemic. Uh we did decide to take a conservative approach to the budget to safeguard, you know, the county from over obligating our resources. In doing so, we knew that we may be back here mid-year to make some adjustments. If you recall, over the last two budget cycles for fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty one, the capital funding has been almost non-existent, aside from the speed camera revenue uh that moved over to the capital plan, which was directed to the Police Fire and Emergency Services Training Facility. Other than that, we didn't have any additional general fund appropriation going to the capital plan. And we know that this low level of funding is not sustainable. And so that's the main reason for this budget adjustment request that we have before you today. And myself and other members of the Capital Improvement Committee are happy to answer any questions that you have or discuss these projects in more detail. And if there are no comments, I would ask um for Commissioners' approval of the budget adjustment that you have in front of you and is also attached to the R.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
Uh Sarah, I have a a question, but go ahead. Whoever spoke first.
No, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Um the last item on our list, the Cascade Budget. Um this is we're we're contributing capital and not um operating. What's that for? Can you specify?
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. So obviously, that's not a capital. Obviously, that is not a capital project. And you are correct, the Cascade Budget um you know, would be in the operating um fund. However, it is considered more of a one-time cost because we do not plan to have that um recurring cost moving forward um due to the hope that that project will um or I guess the expectation that that may be sold. Um so that is why you see it on this budget adjustment. The hundred and fifty thousand is the remainder of what we expected to cost the county for the remainder of fiscal year twenty one. Um and you know, so that's that's why it's on here. It is not for capital. It is for operating, to clarify.
Okay, and the um the total amount of ten million dollars, this is a transfer budget adjustment transfer for our current fiscal year. So uh are you presenting to us that our current budget about halfway through the year, we are over budget ten million dollars in revenue? Is that correct?
I can confirm to you that for income tax, um we have had some unique distributions and we are over our expected budget by that amount. Um five million of that is related to reconciling distributions for previous tax years. So not for the current tax year, but for tax year um twenty twenty nineteen, I believe. Um and I can confirm that, but it was definitely a previous tax year. The other five million is related to um our quarterly distributions that we get from the state. So I would I wanted to specify that because not the full ten million is related to the current tax year. Um there are some unique things going on at the state level right now um that, you know, I think we need to watch as a county. For instance, the governor's relief bill um as it relates to the income tax um on unemployment benefits. So if there are adjustments made for that, the county can expect lower reconciling distributions in the future for tax years twenty and twenty one. I think that's something to consider. I've taken that into account even with this adjustment. So if we do receive lower um than expected future reconciling distributions, I still think that we're in a position to um afford this budget adjustment. But that is something that I would like the Commissioners to be aware of as we move forward with income tax.
Commissioners, other questions?
Um this is Court Minos Schmidt. Have you you can just explain um a little bit of the detail of the systemic projects. There's a million dollars in there. If you could kind of go over what those are.
Yeah, the systemic projects, and I may actually um have Andrew Eschman take this question over. That's a project that his department is in charge of. And um you know, it is broad and it is a project that we provide funding to annually on an annual basis, a recurring basis. It's not a one and done. It's a project that we have reduced funding for in the past several years to try to balance the capital plan. And in doing so, um you know, we have, as a county, done a lot of patchwork instead of fixing. And so we've been basically band-aiding some of our projects that really need addressed. And Andrew, if you'd like to speak um on that a little bit, I that may help.
Yes, can you hear me? This is Andrew Eschman.
Yes.
So yeah, one of the starting points, as Sarah mentioned, some of these were projects that were cut particularly in the past few years. And so we had severe reductions from um what was requested to kind of keep up with the maintenance of effort. So as far as the projects that are in there, uh one of the obligations that we have to finish is the Board of Elections renovation and Scott's on here as well and his his department has been helping to manage that project. But what was originally set aside for uh the purchase and some initial improvements was just more or less to get started. So we still have a number of improvements with the HVAC system and some other things to finish that building. Um that'll be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um and that's in addition to other building improvements that we have, um just to keep up with replacements and modernization. Um the Martin Luther King Building is another one of the old buildings that we have that um former school was built, I believe, in nineteen forty nine. And so it's in need of some um facility upgrades relating to um the electrical service. Uh we'd like to switch that over from heating fuel to natural gas, those sort of things. So um as far as numbers going to each project, uh like I said, parcelling out, there's probably three to four hundred thousand dollars that will need to go just towards um the Board of Elections building.
Okay, thank you. And then the Board of Ed, capital maintenance, is that for a single project, a lot of projects? Do we or do we even know?
Yeah, that um that is specified for that is the amount of money that was requested um from the Board of Education for the Smithburg Roof Project that they have in their capital plan. That was in their capital plan for fiscal year twenty two, um and that's uh where it came from.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Could someone talk to me about the uh safety training center facility funding?
Sure, Commissioner Klein. Um after taking a look at the Police Fire and Emergency Services Training Facility, we realized that the construction completion um was going to occur before the funding um came into the plan. So we had a year of funding coming in um after the Police Fire and Emergency Services Training Facility was actually constructed. And so we'd like to have that adjustment here to make sure that we have the funding in place to complete the project on time.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions, comments?
Yeah, Commissioner Baker, uh Sarah, of that ten million dollars, how much of that ten million as a result of the the income tax increase uh that the Commissioners uh supported?
Well, um Commissioner, five million of it is a reconciling amount for a previous tax year. So probably would not consider most of, you know, would not consider that in that analysis. I can I can put something together for you. Um you know, I will say that in the year that the Commissioners increased the income tax, you know, it was for some very specific projects uh related to the fire and EMS and education um costs that we knew we would be facing. You know, it wasn't just for a one-year um fix. It was as we looked forward in a five-year plan. What costs did we see coming online? And I'm actually preparing something right now to speak with you about that in late late in February um to discuss what some of those items were and what the um long-term picture was or plan was there. Um so I don't have that in front of me, Terry, but that is something that if you'd like me to try to get something put together.
I'd just like to have I'd just like to have an estimate because in my opinion, that money should go back to the people that paid it, uh the taxpayers that paid that money. Uh also, uh you referenced the the operating portion of the Cascade Budget, uh you know, a hundred and fifty thousand in that. And I do think uh the future of cost of projects up there, the water, the sewer, uh the lakes, the roads, uh what uh what budget will they fall under? Will they fall under the capital or operating budget?
There are some capital projects in the um water quality capital budget for Cascade, if I remember correctly. Um I don't have those in front of me, but yes, those one-time costs.
They'll be well, they'll be ongoing costs, but will they fall under the capital budget?
They will. If it's an infrastructure improvement, it'll come in under the capital budget, yes.
Exactly. Yeah, that was what I wanted to know. And the other question is, how much are we proposing to borrow this year in this year's budget?
Uh currently, I have um in the capital plan around twelve million uh for the are you talking about?
So we're going to be borrowing twelve million dollars. That's an increase over last year, uh I believe. And in previous years, I thought we've always tried to keep it around ten million. And then we're going to take this ten million and put it into capital. Uh personally, I'd just like to hold off on this decision. This is just my position. I can't support it today, but I could possibly a a later date. I just think there needs to be a lot more discussion on this.
Sarah, this is Wayne, a question. Where are we? I know you're heavily involved in the budget process for our upcoming budget cycle. Um where are you in terms of gathering the data and compiling um revenue projections? Are are you done at at this point?
I'm not. I'm not done. I am in the process. There are some um interesting things happening. Um so one of the things we're looking at is uh real commercial uh property um appeals and they happen at the um State Department of Assessment and Taxations Office. I have a meeting set up with Melissa Melissa Adelsberger from um Sstat, but it's not until late February because, you know, she doesn't get all the appeals until mid-February. So we need some data um to come in so that we can assess what the impact would be be on budgets there. It could be significant. We are expecting a um a high appeal, um a high level of appeals this year because, as you may be aware, commercial properties are assessed based on the income um assessment. And so their income has been reduced due to COVID. So uh we could face significant reductions there. We need to wait until um we have some data to look at to see what that would be. Um from the income tax perspective, we, you know, we're going to have to move forward in a way where we can project um a decline in some of those reconciling distributions that, you know, we would expect for the future because of the governor's relief bill. If the zero tax on unemployment benefits goes through, keep in mind the county has already received distributions related to that unemployment. And so um probably the the county wouldn't have to in a lump sum provided back to the state, but what the state would do is reduce our future um distributions for those amounts. And so we need to be prepared um for that as well um as we move forward. So I am I am in the process of putting together an income tax budget for you and um hopefully I can have some of those larger budgets um a projection for you on February twenty third, that meeting. That's my um hope to bring something to the board, just as a preliminary high level. This is what budgets are looking at. Let's keep these things in mind type of um conversation.
At that point, Sarah, will you have um more data from the property tax appeals?
Um probably not on that day, but on March second, I will. So.
So what what I'm thinking, just if if I could share what I'm thinking, I appreciate that information, Sarah. Don't mean to cut you off. I I support, you know, many of these projects. They're they're all certainly worthwhile. Um I I do have a concern that since we are so close to getting a clear picture of what our numbers will look like for fiscal year twenty twenty two, income-wise, why not just hold off another month if that's all it is? If if none of these projects are are going to start in the next month, can we just hold off maybe one more month to wait and see on that? I think that would be prudent. Uh I am concerned that so far halfway through our budget year, ten million dollars uh in excess revenue, i- i- on one hand, that's kind of a double-edged sword. On one hand, that's a great thing that we have extra revenue coming in, but it could also signify maybe our our um our our over taxation to to a degree. I I would just like to see if maybe we could wait if if I could just just a second, Jeff, I'm sorry. If maybe.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I dropped my phone.
Yeah, uh hold off another month if we could. That would be my request. Um ten million dollars, we we transferred into capital budget just a couple weeks ago, I think maybe in December. Uh it was it was announced, we transferred a couple million. At that point, we had a nine and a half million dollar surplus is what was reported. So just in a year and a half with COVID, that's not a significant overage on our budget. And um I'd just like to hold off and 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 wait a little bit, just to make sure we have clear numbers for our upcoming budget cycle, so we know what we're in store for, how COVID will impact us. Those um property tax uh um uh hearings that are are going to take place to adjust the commercial property, I mean, two of our largest taxpayers in the county are retail-based and they're likely on that list, I would imagine. So I I would just like to take the cautious route and and examine our numbers when they come in into this month.
Okay, thank you. I just would want to add a comment before I get some more input. Um just for historical basis, uh the reason the income tax rate was increased because we had a three-point-nine million dollar shortfall in revenue by the previous county administrator who presented a budget with a five-cent, four-cent, two-year property tax rate and an increase of the property tax rate to three-point-one. The Commissioners decided that was way too much income tax and done on the taxpayers. We had to make up that shortfall. We put seven million dollars of infrastructure projects on hold and I think at one time we had fifty open positions, which was a total of about two-point-five million dollars that we had in our budget. And these infrastructure projects have been put off long enough. Sooner or later, they're probably going to cost us more money in the long run. But I do thank appreciate everybody's discussion on this. It leads to a good evaluation and transparency. But that being said.
Yes, and I.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna um, you know, mention that when we did the budget for fiscal year twenty one, we were, you know, really early on in the pandemic, we. we were, you know, really early on in the pandemic, we were following the state's recommendations of, you know, thinking we were going to get twenty percent reduction because of high levels of unemployment. And so while it does seem like a large number on the surface, I think if you dig down, you'll realize that, you know, in the budget, we had no funding going to capital, which would normally be a five to six million dollar number right there. And if we had included that in the budget, you know, I think we, we're trying to safeguard against, you know, overspending. And so, you know, we did not put some of these critical things in the budget, but just because they weren't in the budget doesn't mean they weren't critical.
Right. Well, with the thought of COVID and other obstacles coming in our path, it'll be prudent to be cautious. And again, that we have infrastructure projects that sooner or later will need to address. But that being said, is there a motion to approve or not?
Jeff, I got one quick comment.
Please do.
When I came in the office within a month, we were a four-million-dollar deficit. Fire and rescue is in shambles. I don't know if the can was kicked down the road for fifteen years. Fire and rescue, public safety, we're trying to put a lot of money in structure. And I just, I think this conversation is, is basically targeted, why was there a tax increase? Because it wasn't fully supported for fire and rescue, it wasn't fully supported for, Cascade was on the books for how long? Not making any money since we got in here and put a price tag on it. We're trying to sell it, get it back when the tax rolls quite hadn't happened yet. We're, we're, our expectations that will happen. So with that, I'm making a motion to approve the budget adjustment.
Is, there's a motion, there are a second?
Court Manishman, I'll second.
Yeah, first and second, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, this is Commissioner Baker, and I know you referenced Mr. Slokam in your comment.
I said former administrator.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, former administrator, but I don't think he has a vote on the board though, Jeff. That was just my comment.
Well, it was his budget, it was his budget he presented though, Terry. That's always the administrator's budget.
I understand that.
He presented, and three commissioners negated a, a higher tax increase, but I thank you for your opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other discussion? All right, I have first and a second, all in favor, say aye by name.
Aye, Randy.
Aye, Court Manishman.
Those opposed?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Baker, no.
Okay, three to two, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, a great discussion. Next on our agenda is the prop, excuse me, the property acquisition along Halfway Boulevard, Todd Moser.
Good morning, Commissioners, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, Todd Moser, real property administrator, property acquisition along Halfway Boulevard, moved to approve the option agreement for partial property acquisition, including fee simple for property located on Halfway Boulevard with tax ID two-six-zero-three-two-zero-two-four to improve an ordinance approving said purchase and to authorize the execution of the necessary documentation to finalize the acquisition. The option agreement has been executed for the below-listed property. The fee simple acquisition is shown in the table below. The partial property acquisition will allow for additional clearing for increased visibility and improvements to the drainage. And that's, that's all I have.
All right. Commissioners, comments, questions?
There's no comments or questions, then I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the option agreement.
They have a, they're a second?
Randy, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, was there a amount, dollar amount associated with that? I didn't pick that up.
Eight thousand dollars.
That's a, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye by name. Aye, Jeff?
Aye, Court Manishman.
Aye, Randy.
Aye, Wayne.
That's four. Terry?
Uh, aye, Terry.
All right, thank you, Terry. All right, motion passes. Next up, bid award criminal licensing and storefront ballistic glass, Brandy Noggle, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brandy Noggle in the purchasing office, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Also with me, I believe, on the call this morning is Kristen Grossnickel and Kevin Lewis, I'm sorry, Kevin Tucker, from the courthouse in the department where the installation will be taking place. The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the bid award, P U R fourteen-eighty-seven criminal licensing and storefront ballistic glass. Move to award the bid under option number one for the purchase, delivery, and installation of ballistic glass and its hardware for the criminal licensing and storefront project to the responsible responsive bidder, Clear Security Systems of West Caldwell, New Jersey, who submitted a total sum bid of eighty-six thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars. On December second, twenty-twenty, the county received four bids for this project. The invitation of bid was purchased, was published in the local newspaper, listed on Maryland's e-Maryland Marketplace website and the county's webpage. Twenty-six companies did download the document. The installation of the ballistic glass increases the overall safety for these areas, making staff and the general public feel safer while in the building. The ballistic glass goes beyond just stopping the bullets, it also prevents the smash and grabs that happen over at the courthouse. The ballistic glass will also make it more difficult for the public to gain access to the staff when they're at the front counter. The department has budgeted for this project. They have budgeted thirty-two thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars within a grant G R T five-ten, fifty-three thousand four-hundred-and-forty dollars in grant five-fourteen, and the remaining five-hundred-and-ten dollars will be coming out of the operating budget for the courthouse. Again, we're asking for approval to award to Clear Security Systems for a total sum bid of eighty-six thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
Brandy, this is Court Manishman. On the chart that we have, what's the difference between option one and option three?
So option one bundles all of the areas into one bid. Option two allows them to bid them out separately. Bidding them together, as you can see, was a cost savings, we did do the math. Now, if for some reason funding would not allow, they could choose to do maybe just one of the areas. So we broke it out to give them an option.
Got it. Thank you, that's, just trying to figure it out.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to award to option number one?
Uh, Terry approves option number one.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a first and a second, any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye by name.
Aye, Court Manishman.
Aye, Jeff?
Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Randy.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's five, thank you.
Thank you.
Brandy, I believe you're up next with the intergovernmental cooperative purchase. Please introduce yourself again in the matter, please.
Brandy Noggle, buyer in the purchasing department, and I believe I have Garrison Plessinger from the airport on the call as well. The last recommendation I have for you this morning is the intergovernmental cooperative purchase, I N T G twenty-dash-zero-zero-five-four for two John Deere ten-twenty-five R utility tractors for the Hagerstown Regional Airport. Moves to authorize by resolution for the Hagerstown Regional Airport to purchase two ten-twenty-five R utility tractors for a total cost of forty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents, and the approval to utilize another jurisdictions contract that was awarded by Baltimore County Public Schools, two John Deere out of Cary, North Carolina. The Hagerstown Regional Airport is requesting to replace two of the current airline-specific service tugs with two John Deere ten-twenty-five R utility tractors. The current tugs have over seventy, seven thousand hours on them and are having increased mechanical issues as well. There's issues finding parts and qualified mechanics to work on them. Therefore, replacement seems like the smartest way to go for the tugs. The requested two tractors will serve a multipurpose, they'll be utilized to pull the baggage carts, and they're also going to be used for grounds maintenance, including mowing and snow removal. Originally, the airport budgeted for the two airline tugs, they budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars each for the tugs. By purchasing the two tractors, it's going to be a savings of about twenty-eight thousand dollars. The Code of Public Law does allow that the board accounting commissioners may procure goods and services through another contractor entered into by another government entity. I do believe there is a direct cost savings with using this contract due to the economies of scale that this contract has leveraged. The airport has budgeted for this purchase, like I said earlier, in their capital improvement budget. Again, we're asking for approval to purchase two tractors for the total sum of forty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents, and the approval to utilize another jurisdictions contract.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Just like usual, but what are we doing with the two old tugs? Are we going to be selling those?
Hi, Commissioner Manishman, this is Garrison Plessinger, we are planning to sell those, put those on Gov Deal.
Outstanding, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Is not an enter, to authorize?
Yep, I'll make the motion to authorize the Hagerstown Regional Airport's purchase the two John Deere ten-twenty-five R utility tractors.
This is Randy.
All right, I have a first and a second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye by name. Aye, Jeff?
Aye, Randy.
Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Court Manishman.
Aye, Terry.
All right, that's five, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see that ends our, I was on our, I would need a motion, close session.
Commissioner Klein, it's John. Can I just make a comment before we adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Do, I just want to make a comment about the, the budget adjustment that was discussed earlier. I tried to make a few comments and, and couldn't get in, but I'll just tell you that I appreciate the discussion, and I, you know, I listen very intently and I understand the comments that were made by the, by the Commissioners. I want you to know that Sarah and I have already had a discussion, I think she alluded to this, but we plan to come in in a few weeks to have a general discussion with the board, to try to talk through some of those issues about what the initial budget may look like for F Y twenty-two as compared to F Y twenty-one, and maybe what the original F one, F Y twenty-one budget looked like before, before COVID hit, and then some of the previous budgets. So, so we, we've been talking about that, and, and Sarah and I, we just talked about that yesterday, and the plan is to come in, and before we actually come in with it, with the budget, to come in and, and have a discussion item on the agenda, just to have those kind of discussions, so we can try to compare the budgets for this year and for last year, and for what the original one looked like. I think, you know, for me, it's, you know, I want to try to compare, you know, apples to apples if we can. It's a little bit difficult because the income tax came in halfway through the year, so we have, we're going to try to compare all those, but I just want the Commissioners to know that staff is looking at that, and, and we will have a separate item on the agenda just so we can have those kind of discussions. But in the meantime, if you have anything you want to talk about, obviously Sarah and I are available to do that, but I want you to know that staff is, staff is already looking at that, so, and we, we look forward to that discussion.
If I could just say, this is Commissioner Kiefer, John, thank you for that. And, you know, I think it's worth saying again, we, we thank staff repeatedly. Staff does a great job for us, including administration, budgeting, finance. Thank you for your work on our budget. You know, I, I think the number one charge that we have as Commissioners is how we spend the public's money, the taxpayers' money. So when we have these discussions, I think they're very healthy. It's okay if we disagree. There's a reason we have five Commissioners, it's, it's okay if we disagree. And, you know, we, we are all responsible to those who voted for us, and we're all responsible to the entire community in Washington County. So it's okay if we disagree. I, I, I want to add, you know, the comment was made about kicking the can down the road and how the, we were in a budget shortfall. I've been a Commissioner now through, and I'm going on my sixth budget process with, with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And every year, but one year, and that was our most recent year, was there a request for a tax increase by county staff. And that's because we were in the midst of a pandemic. But every year, staff came and asked, and showed us information of just what one more penny would bring in in revenue and how that money could be spent. And that's so appreciated for us to understand, okay, this is what one more cent or one more percent would bring in, in revenue. But I, I'm just of the mindset that we prioritize our spending. I suggested during that budget cycle where the tax increase did go into effect, the two percent budget cut. Well, you know what? We actually cut more than two percent during our recent budget due to COVID. We, we showed that we could do that and take care of our citizens' needs, that's fine. I just believe in prioritizing our money a little differently than my fellow Commissioners. I, I don't believe in paying for private infrastructure at, at Fort Ritchie. I don't believe in building bridges to property when, over property that, that hasn't yet realized its potential yet with phase one of that, of that project, and, and that's the bridge of the Antietam. It's okay that we disagree, but it doesn't mean I don't want to take care of the same concerns and same issues just because I don't support a tax increase. Again, every year over those last five years, there was a request for a tax increase. It, it just happened that there was a majority of Commissioners that year that went with it, that's all. I, I would never blame staff for what they present to us because at the end of the day, it's our vote. We need to ask the questions, we need to be happy with ourselves. So I respect everyone's decision, even those who vote differently than me. It's okay to have a different vote, that's all.
All right, any other comments, or any Commissioners for, we asked for a motion to go into closed session?
This is Randy, I just wanted to thank John for, for jumping in there, you know, in the, in the arena of disagreement. It's like an old car, if you don't finally put some money into it, maybe we didn't do tax increase, but we didn't realize how bad our, our first responders were, what kind of shape and how much money we've had to put into them, you know? So it's sort of like an old car, you, oh, tires will get me there another year than they don't. So that's all I have to say, hey, thanks, John, again, for bringing that up.
All right, any other comments before we motion to go to closed session?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Klein, it's Commissioner Baker.
Go ahead, Terry.
John and staff for preparing and having early discussions on our proposed budget that we will be hearing information on. And this is just my opinion, I would appreciate if you'd be mindful that every level of government, federal, state, counties, et cetera, through this COVID have just done some unbelievable spending and are spending money that they don't have. So they're, to me, they're on trains with no brakes. Eventually, the train's going to crash, so I would appreciate if you would be mindful and think ahead about how the federal government, the state government is going to start having to find resources, money to pay for the decisions that they're making now. And I don't want to get into some of the, some of my thoughts as to how they're wasting money, but I think a lot of what they're doing is needed, but I just think they're on a train and it's with no brakes and it's going to wreck. So I hope you're mindful of our county future budgets when you have those discussions. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Baker. Any other comments, or I call for a motion to go into closed session?
I just want to put, and I, I agree with Terry, Commissioner Baker there, and one of the things I know we talked about last year in the beginning before we had a, you know, with our, our budget cycle and before we went into the COVID, but I would like to see, I know we do do a five-year plan, I'd like to see, you know, us look at that five-year plan, and I would like to make that basically vote on it so that we, we have it and we say this is what our priorities are in five years, doesn't mean we can't change it, but we know what's going on five years down the road because we know that we're going to have to pay for those firefighters, and that's an expense that we've got four years down the road, and see those things in there, what our expense is going to be because of current, and, and see those things, not just what we are today in this one year, but what, what does our budget, what do our budgets look like three and five years down the road? So I know we talked about it last year, but something I'm, I'm passionate about.
Yeah, all right, just one last comment from me. Remember the Safer Grant was supposed to be a shared cost, and due to COVID, it was a hundred percent free for, or grant money for three years, so some of that money is earmarked for the Safer Grant, and we also have been working with the EMS community with upwards maybe of two million dollars a year, supporting them with healthcare and a level wage benefit package. So again, a great discussion, look forward to more in the future. Now ask for a motion to go into closed session.
I make the motion.
Second, Terry.
All right, I have first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jeff. All right, thank you, see y'all, see y'all in a few minutes. Thank you.